Before we start, I will ask that all the other talking about themselves, please switch on your microphones because this is going to be a good conversation. Roll call please, Matt.
Alderman Moezio.
Present.
Alderman Speaker.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florrie.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Aaron Taylor.
Present.
Ian Coram.
Agent Grant.
Audience time. Anybody in this committee that would like to speak, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name's Matt Machowski. I am the chairperson of the Waukegan Township Democrats. And there's so many important issues to discuss. Three minutes hardly seems like enough time to cover our thoughts on gun violence, permitting for events, women's choice, policing, clean energy, union jobs. Maybe I can summarize my word, my thoughts with one word: Democrat. Holding partisan primaries is transparency, a way to quickly inform voters in broad strokes the views of candidates. And you might ask, well, what's so partisan about municipal decisions? Is filling potholes really partisan? Well, a lot of national issues are dealt with at the city level. A candidate's party affiliation can inform voters how they feel about Planned Parenthood or gun stores being here in Waukegan. And even local issues like filling potholes are contoured by partisan views about whether you think we should be investing more in bike lanes or big highways. I wish a lot of these issues weren't partisan, but as long as we have a major political party that rejects science, women's rights, workers' rights, election results, and more, then voters deserve to be able to know how candidates feel about those issues without needing a political science degree. While I want to encourage voters to become more active and to know candidates on a personal basis, requiring voters to do that without providing affordable childcare, a living wage, it favors those who treat politics as a hobby, people who can afford to do that, instead of working people who have to worry about how they're going to pay their bills. And I know some will point out that not everyone elected with a D next to their name agrees with, you know, the party position on issues, but it informs voters the sort of social circles they run in and the constituency groups that they have to answer to, as we saw in the June 28th primary. Studies show that nonpartisan elections suppress the vote among lower-income voters, people who tend to not have a college degree. It favors wealthier candidates, and it doesn't even do what it purports to do. It does not reduce partisan divisions in municipal elections, as parties and voters continue to seek out and identify candidates that align with their views. If the council wanted to stop flirting around the edges of process politics, they could put resolutions on the ballot asking to raise the minimum wage, support affordable housing, sustainable development, stuff like that. And I know that whatever process Waukegan uses to elect candidates, I and Waukegan Democrats...
Thank you, Mr. Machowski.
Thank you.
Clyde McLemore. What do each and every one of you have to hide? A nonpartisan election system is not giving the voters a chance to know your values. What is happening here is you're trying to throw a Republican agenda. The citizens in your district would never vote for a Republican. Again, I ask each and every one of you, what do you have to hide? Where's the transparency? Our city government is supposed to work for the citizens, not hide. I spoke at this chamber and explained what a nonpartisan. If Chicago had been nonpartisan in 1983, the first black mayor here in Washington would have never won. Had Harold lost, a young Columbia University graduate named Barack Obama might have never inspired to move to Chicago and work as a $10,000-a-year community organizer. In 1986, white Democrat committeemen began plotting to change the system to block Washington reelection. Most southern states hold runoff elections to prevent black candidates from winning and due to dividing the white vote. War bosses figured it would work in Chicago. In 1995, they figured and got their wa... They... In 1995, they finally got their wish. During the two years, Republicans controlled all branches of government in Springfield, and General Assembly passed a law making mayoral elections nonpartisan. This happened because 50 aldermen seats in Chicago counselled 29 wanted Harold out. That's how the vote passed. As I say, it worked for 30 years. No black or brown could even win as a mayor. Daley sat there three terms, and then Ron Manuel sat there for two terms. Greg Moiseo, I heard you tell me that Democrats have never done nothing for you. Well, Democrats, voters allow you to win and be the longest-serving alderman here in Waukegan today. You'd have never won if you ran as an independent or a Republican.
Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Okay, since... Oh, I'm sorry.
There was conversation regarding block parties. I guess I'm wondering, when do we get an opinion back from the city attorney regarding definitions?
That's not on this committee right now. That would have to be brought up under regular business.
So, I... Do you have... Does this committee have bylaws or documentation regarding how it's formed?
This is just discussing this one topic.
Committee on the whole is usually an opportunity for the whole, the entirety of the city council to have a normal discussion about specific issues. So tonight, given the impact of the referendum regarding, the possible referendum regarding nonpartisan, that's why this was placed here.
So...
But that can be brought up under regular business of city council.
Okay, so, back to my question. What you're also saying is, is there might not be any bylaws or ordinances regarding this public body?
The committee on the whole does not have specific bylaws. In fact, none of the actual, none of the committees of the city council have their own bylaws.
Okay. Any idea why that is?
The committee's structure is simply a way of the city council to organize how it does its business. And so, it's just a...
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pence. Anybody else who would like to talk on the nonpartisan election system? At this time, I'm going to let Mr. Moiseo and Mr. Turner start off the conversation. Mr. Moiseo, would you like to start first?
Sure. I've made a lot of statements about this, and my voters find it... My major voters, because I said, "Party politics has never entered into my decision section." Democrats have never come to me and said, "Hey, you gotta vote like this, you gotta vote that." I think the things that divide this country so badly at the national and maybe even the state level are things that never get to our table. Going forward, my second motivation behind this, about the terrorizing situation. I think the country is terribly divided with the people in the opposite, for lack of a better word, between the Democrats and the whites. That being said, a little history, the longest-serving alderman, Larry Tempest, of 44 years, was born. And I guarantee you, he may not tell you this, but he ran whatever flag he knew he could get about that. Plain and simple. Everybody up here, I mean, you didn't mean to stretch it, but I mean, the bottom line is politicians want to run under whatever flag they can get about that. Whatever will help them get about that. Alderman Newsom runs as a Republican. I run as a Democrat. We've both been here 20 years. I highly doubt people are voting for me than one of us. These people I know, because I talked in my work, they're voting for us because being Republican, they're down for that. They put us back in office for 20 years because I think you've tried to do a good job and we're responsible. We had two independent mayors, Spahn and Mayor Taylor sitting there now. So, I just don't think it ever plays into some of those... Now, some of those points are very valid. People, some people just walk in, especially in the primary, just walk in and they just, even a Democrat, they just do that. And I get that. I get that some people just do that. But, again, the national party values, to me, have never, have never come into play here with any council I've ever been on. Mostly aldermen that I've been with have always voted for Congress or probably thought they should vote, not because of a Democrat or other party. Our school board is nonpartisan, and it's very diverse. Our partnership is nonpartisan, and it's diverse, all right? You guys are not partisan, correct?
That's right.
Correct? So, maybe I was being naive, and I was naive until somebody sent me that article about what happened in Chicago, about that. But people know me about that. It's not about poor, black, and brown people. You guys know me about that. I just think it's time that we tear this down. It doesn't make a difference. Again, this is just us deciding to put it on the ballot. People in Waukegan can make the decision on how they want to do it. We can't make that decision by ourselves. Every county politician, every state politician, every national politician knows, look at the data, Waukegan's both Democratic in those issues. They just do. That... Waukegan is a Democratic town. Illinois is a Democratic state. It just is. So, to me, going to this form of government, I just think that this form, to commit people to that, I just think it helps tear down some divisions. And again, like I said, it's just, why be phony? Why be fake artists? Why have different views on it, like this, because I know it's going to get elected? To me, that's not being transparent, and that's being dishonest. To me, and if you want to get to know your candidate, that's what you're supposed to do. You're supposed to talk to him. Just because they've got a Democrat or a Republican, oh, he must be for this, oh, he must be for that. Well, that's never going to get to our tables, ever. And I think I've got 20 years of history that I can fall back on and say, it's never happened. It's never happened. And that's why I proposed this. It was something that's been in my mind for a long time, was I just think it's, you know, it doesn't make a difference. But I get some people's views on it, and I understand it. It'll just be this body here, it doesn't affect, you know, anything else. It's just the city elections, the mayor, the corporate treasurer, and the all. Now, I'm going to have to have a word explaining the timeline, because that is a little bit dicey. It's a little... Dicey is maybe not the right word. It's a little bit difficult. And I've been on record saying that I think it should be easier for people to run.
Yes.
Trust me, I sat on two, what was it?
Let go.
Election boards, not because I wanted to, because I had to. Me and Alderman Newsom did because we were the senior aldermen, and we had to. And the reason that someone can challenge someone's petitions to me is it's idiotic, to me. I mean, I've run five, I've elected five times, plus the primaries. Your petitions, I mean, you have to know what you're doing, otherwise it's very easy to screw up and just throw off. That's what keeps people down, not Democrat or Republican. That's what keeps people from running, this petition process that you didn't need a lot of you to figure out. Not Republicans or Democrats, but the petition process is what makes it harder for people to run. Rethink that, not Republicans or Democrats. Rethink that. Make it easier for people to run by redoing that. But that's way above our pay grade, that's a state's law. I've talked to more senators. Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Moiseo. I totally agree with everything Alderman Moiseo stated, but I would like to add, another benefit to going to the nonpartisan election system, excuse me, another benefit is that you potentially draw a larger pool of candidates from across the entire spectrum of our community, right? People who may not have an interest may suddenly have an interest, but that's only the potential. The reason, the main reason why I support this is because I do believe in democracy, and there's absolutely nothing more democratic than allowing our voters to decide what type of elections they want to have. And that is the question for this committee. Do we allow the voters, do we give our voters across the city the opportunity to decide? We will not decide tonight to have partisan or nonpartisan elections. We will decide tonight whether to put that question on the ballot in November for the voters to decide. That is your transparency. That is your democracy. And that is what democracy looks like. So I am totally and absolutely in favor of this motion to put the question on the ballot for a November election, to move Waukegan to a nonpartisan electoral system. And I would encourage each of my colleagues to vote in favor of it as well. Thank you.
Harvey.
You have a question?
I have something to say about that. My biggest concern about nonpartisism is that I believe it possibly tries to mimic southern laws that are meant to keep out black voters. And I believe that nonpartisism will do cause voters... It does affect voter turnout, it causes less education when it comes to voters. And I represent a different party, and a lot of my constituents are Democrat, and there are different views and values on this. And I believe this should be decided at state level. We need to hear more talking about addressing gun violence, mental health, housing, things of that sort. You know, it just shouldn't mimic history such as it was pointed out in Chicago, Harold Washington. So that's my position on that.
But we already have nonpartisan elections, and all the voters engage in the park district and the school board. So why should the park... Why can't they be nonpartisan, but we have to be partisan? And how is that, you know, that doesn't jive how it affects voter turnout or impacts people of a particular skin color? Because I'm black, and I vote for the park district. I vote for the school board, and I don't, you know, I vote for municipal elections, and I vote in all elections. But it's, my color doesn't play a part in that, so, you know, I don't get that.
I'm going to let the attorney talk about the legal part of it, and then we will take... I'll make a motion for it, and then if anybody else wants to, I don't know, we can.
Well, I was just going to say that it would be appropriate to have a motion. You kind of, you know, debate on this already, and then if there's a specific question, I'm happy to answer them, or if anyone would like me to kind of run through the summary about what you were, if there are requirements, or how we...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call please. I'm sorry, discussion, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what is it?
You're not going to do that.
So you said you're opening it to questions? Okay, so, I have a couple of questions. One of the things Alderman Moiseo mentioned was the petition process and how that throws people off the ballot. Well, how does going nonpartisan change the petition process?
Doesn't.
And real quick, I'll go first. I know where you're going with this. This one would be sticky, yes, because it's changed.
I can't hear you, what?
I said, in my opinion, yes, that's why I want Alderman Stewart to explain. This petition process would be very confusing, but going forward, I think it would be, you're not going to change how petitions have to be, except for he was playing that, but...
Well, that's why I'm asking the question. I want to hear from...
Let's let Corporate Counsel answer that for us.
So, to answer, I think, Alderman Turner, your question was, would switching to a nonpartisan system reduce the ability to challenge petitions? Is that right?
Basically, yes. Is it going to make it less likely you'll get thrown off the ballot if we have a nonpartisan system?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then my next question, my next question is, this particular petition process starts very soon. I called yesterday, and they said they don't have an exact date, but they think it's going to be sometime the beginning of September. If we put this on the ballot in November, and the citizens decide they want to go nonpartisan, I've spent September and October collecting signatures saying I'm a Democrat. Now, November 8th, or whatever the election day is, I don't know, the 1st, is it, November 1st? Whatever date we're having the election, then they, then it suddenly changes. Now, do I have to go back out and get more signatures that say I'm not a Democrat? And present them for presentation on November 20, whatever the date's going to be?
So, there's a memorandum, I'm not, I'm sending this memorandum, not that, should write a memorandum. The Public Record Committee as well, on the board of office, which does explain that due to the schedule of the election, that the referendum would be going on on November 8th. The final date to submit petitions would be November 28th this year. And so candidates, whether they are going to be for a partisan primary or to vote, or to run as a nonpartisan, both the last dates to submit petition would be November 20th. And so, that does create a lot of pressure.
Is there any way we can just make this, like, in April or something, so that it doesn't coincide with our petition process? Can we just ask to put this on the ballot in April instead of in November?
There are a few options that you could have. You could have...
I'm sorry, I did not hear a question. It's really muffled coming over. Repeat it, please.
I said, can we just have this put on the ballot in April, when we're up for election, actually, rather than in November, when it's going to mess with our petition process?
The answer is yes. You could specify that this question could be put on any later election, including the capable consolidated municipal election.
Good question. I'd really like to ask the first to hold it over, since there's still questions about this.
Corporate Counsel, I second that.
Well, if we... Why don't you just vote on it?
What is the rush? What's the big rush?
So, the issue is, is that if you want it to be placed on the November ballot, it would have to be approved, it would have to, the city council as a whole, would have to vote by August 21st. This is our last regular meeting before August 21st. So, by holding this over, the, and I believe the research rules, that to overhaul that would require a two-third vote of the city council to overhaul, however, you would basically lose the opportunity to place this on the November 8th ballot.
Okay, Corporate Counsel, Alderman person stated that, why won't we wait until April? I mean, what, I guess I don't understand the rush to do it in November, where it would confuse us in terms of our petition. So I don't understand why you just can't hold it over, look at April consolidating elections, if that's the case, and do it that way.
You can technically do what you want.
Right.
But the big issue is that November is a general election, so you get more people that turn out for that election. And if you're bringing something like this to the public, the thought was, do it when you're going to have more voters than doing it in a more chaotic election where there's...
Very few. Very, very low voter turnout in an automatic election.
It doesn't matter to me when it's put on the ballot. I do agree, it might be better in April, because right now, the petition process would be a little sticky. And I have no problem with waiting on this and then bringing it. And I understand Stewart's a lot of work in trying to get this, because, you know, the thought was, we had a deadline, we had to get it, we're going to put it on November 20th. So maybe, at least, at least give them some options. Like I said, I have no problem with waiting until April, if that's what... We'll still have to, well, first of all, we're going to hold it over, we're not going to make the decision today. We can come back and make the decision, even if it's just going to happen. Now, I know people, there will be some...
You can take a motion there.
That's an operating right.
Mayor.
So, and if Alderman Turner wants to hold it over until the next meeting, that's fine with me, I don't care. I'm fine with that, because I do agree that the petition process will be very sticky. It will be, it will be very sticky.
No.
And we don't want any word in the future than we already have. That's just my opinion. So I'm all for it, waiting until next week. And it will be, that will be...
So we have a motion to hold it over by Alderman Moezio, a second by Alderman Speaker.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Do you still want to hold it over if we're going to vote to just put it on the April ballot? Could we vote on that? Tonight, or do you...
Why do we need to vote on it?
Why don't we just leave it alone?
Why don't we let the people decide? That's what we do in a democracy. We let people decide, the voters decide. I just want to say something, you know, it's, I think it's incredibly selfish and self-serving to measure your vote based on the convenience of getting your signatures on a petition. You go out, you get 25 signatures, oh my God, they're no good. Let me go get some more. Doesn't take that much effort. You already have the, a list of people that are going to sign your petition, and it's an opportunity to educate the voters. I don't see why it's so, what the insistence is on being partisan.
Can I, can I speak to that, please? So, I just found out I have an opponent already for my, my primary election. I'm not going to get just 25 signatures. I'm aiming to get maybe, maybe 250 signatures. I work full-time. I only have certain times I can go out to get signatures. I don't have all day, every day to do that. So if I'm suddenly pressed to get signatures in a three-week period, that's not going to happen.
Yeah, you just, but there's a minimum. So your minimum is going to be like 50 signatures, and you can go back and get it. And you already have talked those 400 or 500 that you initially talked to.
This is true, but we just talked about how they throw people off the ballot. What if, what if someone doesn't sign their name quite right?
Well, that's going to be the case regardless. That's the, that's the process, right? I've been thrown off the ballot.
Are we going to hold it over, except if it's not...
It's going to be held over. It's going to be held over. We can continue this discussion now, if we want, or we can just, when we come back in two weeks, we'll have to decide whether it goes on the ballot or not. I'm sure there will be a lot of banter, but again, I want people to know what my intentions were on this. I think I've made them clear. If anybody wants to discuss it more, you can call me. That's fine.
So at this point, you have to hold it over, so...
So, so if we hold it over, then the next question will be, is it going to be put on the April ballot? Because then we'll be way past the November issue.
It has no choice but April, unless you extend it even further out. You could vote to the next mayoral election, right? The next presidential election.
Okay. So, okay, so we're going to hold it over, and then the decision, the next time we bring this up, is, is it going to be in the April election?
Or after, or after that.
Why can't we do that now? Why can't we just amend it, instead of saying, put it on the November ballot, put it on the April ballot?
Because Alderman has now the right to hold.
Okay, thank you.
With that, that item is closed. Let's go to item B, which is, can I have a motion first?
I'll second.
Okay, so Alderman Moiseo, first, Alderman Rivera, a motion to go to closed session, or a second session, to discuss any affirmative litigation pursuant to section 2, first, 2C. two, or two, three, 11 of the alderman's. Roll call, please. Alderman Moore. Aye. Alderman Seager. Aye. Alderman Moiseo. Aye. Alderman Kirkwood. Aye. Alderman Newsom. Aye. Alderman Turner. Aye. Alderman Rivera. Aye. Alderman Corin. Aye. Same as option, here, one? Alderman here, the second one. Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you.
Alderman Dolson. Present. Alderman Seager. Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Kirkwood.
President.
Newsom. Present. Turner. Turner, Turner, first, Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Corin. Alderman Hayes.
Here.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Alderman here, second, Alderman Corin. Roll call. Alderman Moiseo, maker.
Aye.